Great, welcome everyone. We have a very special meeting happening tonight. But before we get started, I'd like to have everybody stand for the presidential.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America is a republic which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice.
This is a very, 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 very special event. You notice everybody's standing at the back of the room back there. We have all, I think everybody is here, or most everybody is here, our officers. This is our village police department, and we're here to recognize somebody who has been a member of that department for 35 years and has made the decision to go on to the next venture in life. So with that, I'd like to have all the officers come up here. Mr. Alber, Officer, Officer Alber, could you please come up?
I didn't think.
You know, it's not often we can get everybody together like this, but you can when you have somebody of caliber and the dedication that this gentleman has provided to the village for 35 years. It's been an honor, it's been a privilege, it's been just one of the things I've always treasured as being the mayor of the village of Reinbeck is having you on the police force, Officer Alber. I don't know how I can say it, but I'm sad to see you go, but as I said before, I'm happy for you to go because this is a privilege that not too many people take lightly and move forward. So with that, all of the officers here are here to commemorate Officer Alber for shield number 12 and grateful appreciation for his 35 years of dedicated service and commitment to the Reinbeck community. We wish you all the best in your retirement. Thank you from the village of Reinbeck.
I'll just say something real quick. It's been a great honor and a privilege to serve the village of Reinbeck for all those years. As a native Reinbecker myself, it was nice to know so many people that made the job that much easier. But working with some of these guys, all of them, take care of those people, they're great guys, they'll never leave you hanging. A lot of memories, a lot of stories, a lot of fun times, a lot of crazy times, but it's all behind me. It's good. It's a great feeling. I thank you all.
Thank you.
Everybody at the department, Dan, here's your retired shield 12. And you got to see Martina to get your ID. Just wanted to thank Dan for his dedication, his commitment to the department. When I came on here, Dan was the first one I rode with, so he was showing me around and had all worked here in Reinbeck, even though we went to high school together and we graduated together and known each other a long time. I appreciate everything you've done and your dedication and commitment to the department. Thanks.
Anybody else have tears in their eyes you want to?
Nice showing you. Nice meeting you.
This is not the model I want y'all following. We're going to piss him. Thank you all. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss mayor responsibilities, so I'm going to have to ask, did I make a motion, second? All in favor? All right, so I'm going to have to ask you to just step out for a couple of minutes while we go into executive session again with this matter. We're going to move on to that. We're in the discussion pages of a lot of stuff, so there's business coming, but we are, have a lot of business also to discuss. The next thing I want to discuss is mulch distribution, all right? Just for you all as well, I think everybody here knows that we are in the mulch distribution business, okay? We collect brush from the streets, our village staff gathers it up, we take it out to the, we take it out to the highway garage, we hire a contractor to come in and mulch it, and the contractor mulches it, then at some point in the season, we have a sale, all right? I'm not disputing the fact that we need to pick up brush. We need to be able to keep our streets clean, we need to be able to give the ability for our residents to have some way that we can collect that and get it out of the way so it can be used appropriately. What I'm concerned about and what I want the board to weigh in on here is the distribution of mulch sales. And if I go back through the last half a dozen years, 2019, 2020, we only lost $705. 2020, 2021, we lost $10,145. 21, 22, we lost $6,905. 2023, $4,685. 23, 24, good year, we only lost $1,135, all right? 24, 25, we lost $1,600. Going into 25, 26, given we haven't had a mulch sale yet, but we're on the verge today with what we've received in revenue and what we're spent and are about to spend, if we don't sell any more mulch, we'll lose $23,810 this year. Because we're now to the place where mulch is greater than one mulch a year, we now have to mulch twice a year because we don't have enough space.
Shred the stuff.
Shred mulch, shred the stuff, grind it up. We don't have enough space to keep the brush and the mulch with the capacity that we're getting, so we're getting into grinding it up twice a year.
That's really the cost.
That's $12,000 to grind up, and we wait till we get a sufficient plow, $12,000 to grind it up. Now, this doesn't do account that we do, and I just looked at the last two years, 24, 25, 2024, we did 96 deliveries. 2025, we did 97 deliveries. So let's just average it, let's see, we're doing 100 deliveries a year. That's taking our highway staff who are delivering shredded bark to our residents, right? And they're not doing village work. Basically, two days a week for several months, they are out of service. We're getting three days of work in two days, and it's great that we can provide this service, it's great that we give a great discount to our village residents, we charge more for town residents, but we're losing money. That's the end of the day, and it's going to get worse because we're a tree city, thank you, I'm happy about that, but when you're a tree city and you have lots of great trees, you get lots of brush, and you combine that with the storms that we're having, our storms are intense, and every storm, there's a huge brush pickup. So, no vote tonight, but I am looking for your opinion on should we or should we not pursue looking, and I don't know the answer.
Right.
I do not know the answer, of staying in the mulch distribution business.
I think it's worth exploring what the options are, because we have all of this stuff in our highway garage, and so I don't know, I don't know how we would get a private contractor or whatever, like, would they take the stuff away, like, would they do it on site? Like, it would just be nice to know sort of like what the options available to us are.
Yeah, so we batted around, Kyle or myself and the others, we batted around with a couple of options. And one option, I actually took the legal and said, hey, can we hire a contractor to come in, use village property, basically run a business out of there, and take it, grind it up and do it?
I would imagine the answer to that question is no.
What is the answer to that? Was, no, you can't do that.
Right.
All right, so, but it's even worse than that because our exit is on Violet Hill Road, and I know Vanessa remembers very well that what we wanted to do, compost on and have vehicles exit on Violet Hill Road.
Right.
You better.
Yeah, no, I get that, yeah.
Yeah, we'd all be in jail.
What if we bought our own grinder? Would it pay off?
So, again, it's how much time? Now we're, now we're taking our short staff and having them grind as well and also deliver, plus the staff here who takes orders every day, Karen, Martina, Chrissy, they're taking mulch orders every day, processing receipts, doing all of that. You know, it is an option that we could get a grinder, but maybe an option is that, you know.
We truck the stuff somewhere else.
We, we do like we did with our compost RFP, and we said we're looking for somebody to compost within a radius.
Right.
And if that radius is close enough that we can deliver to.
And drop the raw brush.
And drop the raw brush off, we're done.
I think the issue is that this program began as a nice sidelight as we were collecting brush, but now it's become like the tail that's wagging the dog at this point in terms of the amount of money and the amount of staff time that we have to commit to it. So what started as like a nice little like, hey, great, let's sell the mulch and we'll cover our costs, has kind of mushroomed, and now it's, on this magnitude, it becomes a much more difficult management problem.
I'm willing to pursue options.
Do we want to be in the mulch business? Do we want to be in the mulch business? That's the question.
Right.
I think that, I will say that I think the residents have, you know, really valued that they can put their brush out and it's taken away.
We're going to do that regardless.
So I don't think we stop that.
I agree, 100%. We don't want, and I said that, we want to stay doing that. It's the distrib, I'm using the very word, the distribution of mulch.
Well, like the management of the mulch and then the distribution of it, right?
Or the disposal of the materials.
Once we've collected all of these branches, then what happens?
If the board is willing, I'm, I'm willing to still continue to pursue, but I want to get your.
I think we should look.
Yeah, I think it's definitely a conversation.
You know, and if you said, no, we want to stay in business.
I, I see no reason to stay in business if we don't need to, in that particular business. I think we should stay in business in general, but. You're welcome.
Does anybody here have it?
Agrees.
Agree or different opinion?
I mean, I just, I don't want, like, whatever solution we come up with, I don't want it to be that the brush gets brought to a landfill or gets.
Oh, yeah.
Like, it needs to be recycled.
Somehow.
Yeah, I agree with Vanessa, but $23,000 is a lot if we're going to be losing that much money.
Well, again, we haven't had any sales this year, but we are anticipating $24,000 in cost, expense, that we would have to recover. We would never recover $24,000, right? Our best, our best year was '23, '24, when we sold $11,865 worth of.
So even if we match revenues for that year, we're going to lose $12,000 on this?
Correct.
Not including, like, manpower?
We didn't have to mulch twice then.
That year.
The last two years, we have had to mulch twice, and it's $40,000 each.
Right, yeah.
Because of the reasons why.
Yeah, 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 I mean, we're just producing more and, yeah.
All right, so if you, if you're all in agreement.
Yeah, I think it's worth it.
How about the public? Any comments from the public?
Have you explored options? Like, there's green waste facilities up.
That's what we were just discussing.
Okay, like, when I was school, SUNY Morrisville for environmental, they took in truckloads, Class A trucks unloaded, and kill and drive the lumber, the, the green waste was used for harness or to use for product, so.
So that's what the board just said, let's go explore options, we need to bring those options back to the board because this is expenditure of how we're spending.
I believe it costs, there's not much value in just green waste, but to get it out of there would be an option, but.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to continue, I may ask for help and support.
Sure.
I would take your input in terms of options as well, because if we do this, it'd be nice to get it done before we.
After mulch.
How can we grind it?
Yeah, exactly. Before I mulch again.
All right, we'll move on. Thank you. Next is, I want to talk about a truck. Trucks are always trucks, right? I can do this pretty much. So we have one of our larger dump trucks, one of our older dump trucks, the engine blew on it two months back. We were able to work with a local mechanic to have the engine rebuilt, cost us seven grand to rebuild the engine, but we have no guarantee that this truck is going to last through the winter forests. It's on its, quite honestly, it's on its, approaching its last legs.
Is this one of the internationals?
What?
Is this one of the internationals?
Yeah, it's one of our larger, and we depend on this truck for snow removal, hiring, hauling blacktop, you know, hauling, hauling huge loads. So as a result, what we'd like to do is ask the board for permission to seek and put out an RFP to look for a used truck and not purchase new. And the reason to not go new, a new truck right now is three years, two and a half at best. So we've done some initial looking, and there are used trucks out on the market, we could put out an RFP, we could.
We don't need RFP.
What?
We don't need RFP.
We don't tell them?
Depends how much it is.
Yeah.
We're not bidding for somebody to, we're looking for.
But if we're going to purchase one, then we don't.
No, but we need to go, it depends how much, if it's above the threshold of $35,000, we do need to go.
Oh, and it's above the threshold, it's $100,000 versus $250,000.
What size is this vehicle?
So, this is our seven yard dump.
What size is the replacement? Is it a non?
We want to get the equivalent, we don't have, I don't have one today.
Okay, is it, is it a CDL or a non-CDL truck?
It is a CDL truck.
Okay.
Right.
We've been talking about moving away from that.
And unfortunately, this is the only truck, one of the few, the other CDL truck, when it was purchased, has all of the conveyor belts built into it, can't haul blacktop.
Right, right. Oh, so we need one.
We need a truck that can haul.
So we need a CDL truck that can haul blacktop.
Right, and unfortunately.
We can't just get like a three yard dump truck or something?
Not big enough to haul, sufficient amount that we could use. You can, we can get three, five, seven, 10.
Yeah, no, I was thinking like a, I don't know, like a 3,500.
The last one we bought was five yard, it was non-CDL. What the superintendent of public records was wishing, requested is we go for a larger truck to haul a large load of whatever. But, whatever, I agree with you, I would like to go for, say, a five yard, and that's what the board desires, that's what we could do. The question is, do we want to go out and to bid for a truck?
I mean.
Do you want to wait to see if we can limp this truck along? That's really the question.
Well, we don't want to, the, part of the problem is if it breaks in the middle of snow season, then we're.
Right, right.
It gives the belt a side of a couple of years ago.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I have no ability to judge what size truck we need, like, this is not my job, but, you know, so like if this is what Kyle is recommending, then sure, we should go look for it, but this is an unanticipated expense for this year.
Yep, we weren't expecting the engine to blow.
Right.
So.
Right. You know, I mean, like, isn't this why we have like a mechanic on staff to be able to keep these things limping along?
Not when you blow an engine rod.
Oh, all right, fair enough.
Yeah, we can do a lot.
Okay.
But we had, we had to go offsite to rebuild the engine.
Okay, I mean, if we put out a bid for this, like, we don't have to accept any of it.
Correct.
Yeah, so.
Let's see what's out there.
Yeah, I don't see a problem with seeing what's out there, but $100,000 feels like a lot to spend when it's a bunch of it.
And I'd like to continue the discussion about like a 550, largest non-CDL truck we can get versus a CDL.
I, I.
I'd like to have a little bit more discussion about that.
Well, but we want to start the process. Yeah, so let's go see what's out there from five and up.
Fine.
And then bring it down.
That's what I was going to say, maybe look at a couple of small.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve allowing a bid process to seek a used plow truck. I think so, because, yeah, we're not going to buy it, we're not going to buy it, but we're going.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Do you want this RFP presented at the next meeting? We have no specifics, so you're just.
We're going to draw it up. Well, we said we're going to, we're going to draw it up from five, five and up, five to seven.
Do you want to make a motion now or when you actually have the RFP?
Let's do it now.
Yeah, let's do it now because if the other way, they can lay them up. And that's what I think it did, I thought I said, let's make a motion to go out to bid.
You're going to have to re-motion when you have the RFP to post it, because we don't have any of the particulars, is what I'm saying.
Good point, thank you. I'd like to amend this to allow the village of Reinbeck to not only go out to bid, but to make a motion to post the bid, okay?
And my question is, are we, second discussion, are we posting a bid or are we also going to look at, you know, we're going to be contacting other people ourselves, right?
Well, when it goes out, we can do that, yes, as well.
Tell them to bid, right?
Yeah, yeah. Kind of like dozens of phone calls like that.
Right, I mean, somebody that, you know, Sam's Used Truck Sales.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
All right. Okay, Eleanor, you're up. The next one is purchase a replacement swing for the mini park.
Right, there was some, there was some confusion over the inclusive swing at the mini park because that was somewhat newer than the other swings, so the Lions Club had anticipated putting that one back up, but it is now gone, and I tried to track what happened to it, and it just, I think we should just put that all behind us, I would like to move forward. I'd like to invest a tiny little bit of money into the park. I priced an inclusive swing, which is $801, and there's the freight, which is $347.
Goodness gracious.
I know, and there's also a small materials cost, but the issue is that there was some confusion when I talked to Gary about whether I needed three bids or not, and now we're not going to have another meeting, so I would like to actually move forward with this, and what I propose to do is I will donate the freight so that we can keep it under $1,000 and get the swing up. I would like to, I also want to warn you that the Parks Committee chose purple because that is one of the Reinbeck school colors, so if you're really object to purple, you should say so now.
I mean, I think that's extraordinarily generous of you, Eleanor, but I don't think that's.
Well, I know it's kind of not the way things should work, but the problem is we don't have a second meeting, and we've got, you know, this is a replacement, there was a swing that was there, it's Game Time set, and so I assume that we.
Is it a sole source? I'm asking, I don't know, can you get this swing from anywhere else?
Well, Game Time and other vendors have it, yes.
Well, the question itself is Game Time.
It's a Game Time, yes, and the problem is that things are getting to be really very specific, so when I actually contacted Game Time originally for the other swings, the Lions had, had bought the swings, and they used the vendor that was recommended by Game Time, but when I saw, when I sent them a picture of the swings, that, the reaction I got was that they hung the swings incorrectly, because they have like, they've got like suctions and there's legs in between, and so you can't put a two to five age swing next to a five to 12 in that same little segment, and we'd have to switch a swing. So I'm just saying that the reason I wanted to stick with Game Time is so we wouldn't get stuck, you know, suddenly we have a swing and there's a technicality, and then we have an inspection, and then we have a problem, and have to replace it again.
It feels like a reasonable sole source argument to me.
I think the central issue, this is, this is the Lions that accepted responsibility for all of it.
We actually discussed this already.
But the issue, well, yes and no, because the swing was in our possession when it disappeared, and so we really don't have a paper trail as to what happened to it, which is why I just want to forget all that and move forward and just replace the swing and just move forward from here.
And it's up to you, but I have been continually working with the Lions Club and through their attorney to get the MOA adopted. Their attorney is recommending that the Lions Club adopt the MOA, specifically asked if we, do you want us to go out and do this? And he said, no, it should be the responsibility of the Lions Club because that's what their mission, their mission is to do. And that's what we agreed to last time this subject was brought up, is the Lions Club has the ability to go do this. You, the board, if you want to spend a thousand bucks, that's up to you to do it, but my recommendation is that, we've been working very diligently and very successfully with the Lions Club, I would like the Lions Club to continue to do that effort and, and make the swing available.
I just want to say that that's not the version I got, they're hesitant because they don't feel that, they don't feel that it's, it was their fault that the swing got exposed up and some of that.
Yeah, I think this is a slightly different problem than the Lions Park problem in general, and it's not a problem, but like the MOA in general, I think, I do think that there is an argument to be made that the swing was in our possession and then it disappeared, and so why is this now the Lions Club's sort of bag to hold?
Lions Club have a vendor pick it up.
No, they did not, sorry, they did not, that is not.
Right, so there's.
Eleanor, I meant to screw you because I was here, when the vendor picked up the stuff, it was stored in our front lobby, the vendor, we had everything there, including the swing, the vendor came and he took everything with him.
He may have, but the point is that the Lions, the point is that that swing, if you look on the, if you look on the inspection, that swing was not deemed defective, that swing was not tagged for.
And what they said was the vendor chose not to hang that swing because he thought it was defective, and he went back to the Lions Club and told them that.
This is exactly why I want.
This is why we need the MOA, so we don't get into these debates.
This is why I just want to put that behind us and just.
So how do we solve this problem right now?
Just spend a tiny bit of money so that some kids can swing, that's all I'm asking.
Right, we have like a, we have sort of a stopgap problem, so what do we do about this stopgap problem?
Are you proposing that it comes out of, which, which line?
It can come out of parks.
It would have to come out of parks.
I mean, I, I, like, this whole thing has been such like a process all summer long, and, you know, at the moment, we don't have an inclusive swing and it is summertime, you know, if that money is not already spoken for in the Parks budget, then I don't see this being an inappropriate use of that line item. Yes, ideally, the Lions Club would step in and fix this problem for us, but we don't yet have the MOA, we don't yet, you know, they've been working on raising their own money around all of this stuff, so like, in the meantime, we have an empty slot on a swing set that could be filled with a swing. I feel like it is our job to come up with a solution to that while it's still swinging weather.
And we have two choices, we could ask the Lions Club to do it, or we can do it, that's really the choice, it comes down to that.
Right, but like, what is the likelihood that the Lions Club is going to get it done before, you know, November? I don't know. I mean, maybe what we could do is we could say, you know, discuss with the Lions Club, and if in the next like two weeks they say no or whatever, then we'll pick up the pieces. I mean, I'd rather not be the one that's constantly picking up the pieces with this because I feel like this is the reason why we're creating the MOA in the first place, but this does seem like a problem that the five of us. But this does seem like a problem that the five of us.
We could solve this problem today.
Yeah.
And the question is, do we want to step in and solve the problem? That's really it. It's, it's.
I do. I, I, I do.
If you want to do it, we can spend the money to go do that.
You just need three quotes to do that.
Well, unless we declare this a sole source thing, because of this whole dust-up with, apparently screws aren't screws anymore, and they're, you know, it's.
Game Time, it's on Game Time. Probably not a Game Time.
Whatever.
Right, and it's not the kind of Game Time swing set.
Yeah.
So can we give them a two-week deadline?
We're close. I'm working with the lawyer.
Great. Let's give them a two-week deadline. Like, if, you know, if the Lions Club hasn't, like, stepped up before September 1st, then like, we'll make sure that the swing is in place in time for, you know, the first quarter of school.
So you're saying we'll wait till September to make this?
I'm sorry, first, when's our first? No, I mean, like, what we can do is we can just say if the Lions Club doesn't step up, then we'll, like, you know, obviously, that doesn't give them a great deal of incentive to step up, but.
Working with their attorney.
Yeah, you're working with their attorney now, and we might get the MOA dealt with, you know, in the next handful of days.
But then, you know, if they can't handle doing this job, then we have to reconsider the whole.
Break. It's not a question of handling it. They feel that they should not take.
Right, they feel that this swing came out of, they feel this swing was lost when it was on auto wash.
And that's not going to change with signing the MOA.
That's not going to change. And so I feel like we should just let this go, and we should just buy it, and we should all move on and have a lovely purple swing.
I so move. Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Aye.
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 I didn't say aye. Gary did.
Okay.
Show me.
The women said stay, the men said marry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on. Public comment.
I have something, I have something I'd like to say.
Well, can we, Public Go first?
Sure. Vanessa.
Thank you.
Honor.
My name is Marie Trombini, and as the board knows, I have a pending lawsuit against the Village Ed supporters that's being handled in the Supreme Court in Kipsey. My question is, I'd like to know if I can get the village the amount of taxpayer dollars that they have put toward defending themselves in this case since November of 2023 up to perhaps the end of June of this year or July of this year.
Somebody room?
It feels like a FOIA request.
FOIA request.
FOIA request, we'll do it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Lydia, public comment.
There wasn't an agenda item. I wasn't here in July, otherwise I would have said this in July. I talk a lot about making sure that our dialogue builds bridges instead of destroying them. And at our meeting on June 10th, I did not do that, and I regret it. My language is inappropriate and fell short of the standards I hold myself to. I'm sorry. And I plan to do better moving forward, because I want to make sure to model respectful community dialogue, especially around the issues that we care most deeply about.
Thank you for doing that. That takes a lot of courage.
Karen, you're up. Next on your agenda is a presentation by our Treasurer, Karen McLaughlin, on the financial condition of the village.
May I ask a question about the last thing that she said?
You can talk to me after the meeting. Karen, you want me to put it up?
Yes, please.
It's okay. I got it.
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Be careful what you.
Be careful when I throw one there.
Yeah, exactly. You can probably, um.
Whoa, that's very small.
Make it a draft, make it, um, change the view.
So are you controlling this then?
I am controlling it. You okay with that?
Yep.
Do you want to turn the mic on, Karen?
Can you make it a little bigger, or is it just?
I'm, it has a.
The green light's not on yet, Karen. Did I get it?
There we go.
Okay. Thank you, Lydia, for your technical issues. So what I'd like to do is I'm going to get through my first little part, and then just if you, Lydia, would like to just go to the second page after I do.
Sure.
Okay, uncertainty, growth, impact, and change. The US economy has remained resilient despite significant economic policy uncertainty through the first half of 2025. Central banks are expected to navigate a delicate balance between managing inflation and supporting growth, potentially leading to interest rate adjustments. Business leaders express varying degrees of optimism and pessimism about the economic outlook. As all this uncertainty reveals itself, one factor certainly remains the same, and that is how the village performed in the fiscal year 2425. Do you want to go to the picture on the second page, please?
Yes. Oh, I will shrink that a little bit.
Most departments kept within or close to their departmental budgets. Many of the expenses this year were out of regular annual operating budgets. The transfer to capital projects, this is right here, 23%, consist of $222,802 towards the Center Street water upgrade and paving project, $332,452 towards the sidewalk and fire station driveway project, as well as $415,000 to spearhead the upcoming Safe Routes to School project. Yes. Okay. Property tax remain under the 2% tax cap. The tax rate for '24, '25 was $2.54 per thousand assessed value. This is down $0.23 per thousand from the prior year. In 2019, 2020, the property tax was 65% of the revenue received. Now it's down to 50%, and much of this is in part due to revenue generated from grants, interest earnings, and just moving forward, the tax cap will remain at 2% for 2026. So this next slide's going to show's budget, revenue, and expenses. As previously noted, this is budget, revenue, and expenses in all the three different funds. As previously noted, the general fund expenses included $970,000 received and transferred out, which accounts for a much larger expenditure there. Both the water and sewer funds have experienced unforeseen repairs and replacements this year due to their aging infrastructure. This is the primary reason for the proposed capital improvements to both the water and the sewer plants. Okay, these are our capital accounts, and this is the fire department here. The fire department capital amount decreased with the transfer to rehabilitate and pave the driveway in front of the fire station. And this year, the highway, the highway, parking, sidewalks have all been combined to establish a complete streets capital account. Okay, New York class investment accounts. The, in the general fund, this fiscal year, we earned interest of $78,957. In the water fund, $2,683. In the sewer fund, $31,495. These total interest earnings of $113,135 were possible by maintaining a balance between the cash requirements of the operating funds and a balance to invest and generate a profit. A little picture. You can go to the top, but you can, I am going to read all of that.
Oh, okay.
Yes. Again, this, this is really important, I think, the grants and projects, because the board works so diligently with this. The water system upgrade and wastewater treatment plant sewer improvements, the village board was awarded a combination of $6.5 million in grants and low-interest New York State EFC loan to be converted to long-term debt for the water system upgrade. This project is well underway, with long-term debt budgeted for this fiscal year 2526. The village board also received $5.5 million in low-interest EFC loan for the wastewater treatment plant and sewer improvements. This project is set to start this spring, and we are still seeking a grant to relieve some of this debt. Comprehensive Plan Zoning Code, the village comprehensive plan is complete, and now it is on to its implementation. In addition, we have just secured $148,500 grant for the Village of Reinbeck zoning code update. Center Street replacement of the water main repair mill and paving Center Street is complete and was a coordinated funding effort from ARPA, Water Fund, and CHIPS. The sidewalk fire station driveway upgrades, we received $150,000 in a block grant to replace the sidewalk corner at Center Street and East Market with handicap-accessible ramps, as well as the sidewalk in front of the village hall. We also received $147,000 for a new ramp to the fire station, a new fire rescue UTV, commercial washer and dryer, and new life-saving AEDs. Compost facility, a New York State DEC grant in the amount of $200,000 has been received, and a joint compost program has been established with a local farm. Police, the village received $230,000 grant for new radios, scanners, and radar units for patrol vehicles, as well as portable radios. The Safe Routes to School, the New York State DOT has approved a $1.6 million grant for funding Safe Routes to School under the Transportation Alternatives Program. The village has committed $415,000 as its share. The Asher Dam, New York State DEC awarded the village a grant of $49,500 to provide, to provide, protect, and restoration of the water resources. Autism Awareness, the autism committee continues to raise funds, work with the village and community to identify, educate, and engage autism awareness and inclusion. Parks, most recently, the village received a community development block grant for $200,000 for the Lions Mini Park drainage improvements. This is a reimbursable grant, of which the village has allocated $20,000 as a share. Chestnut Street Drainage, the village has applied for a DEC grant for the construction and improvements to mitigate flooding in the Chestnut Street neighborhood. This project is a matching funds grant and will commit the village to approximately $617,000 from future fund balance. So growth, impact, and change is certainly happening with the village board securing grants and moving forward with items that support, sustain, and promote the Village of Reinbeck. Okay, so on to municipal leases. About two years ago, the village experienced issues with much of its fleet and all the departments needing vehicles. Vehicles and equipment were purchased via five-year lease purchase, most during the third year, and as you can see, this drops off around 2029. Having the visual tool to assist the board and departments in future purchases and planning. Our long-term debt. Assessing and monitoring long-term debt is an important strategy for future planning. The lowest line here is the water main project. The village has embarked on a water treatment plant upgrade and a sewer plant upgrade for close to the cost of the water main project. These are in different funds, but we need to always know our total exposure. The village has also committed to the purchase of a new fire truck. This long-term debt schedule must be reviewed prior to any vehicles, equipment, or large purchases.
2034, when it all drops off? Is 2034 the date of that first drop-off?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
What are you going to do?
Okay, so I'm going to do this. Okay, so fund balance. It's a great topic when you have it, and not so good when you don't have it. So I, I just, for a point of reference, I'd like to read our village.
Hey, Karen, you should pick your one off.
I will. Thank you. Okay, so I'd like to go through our village's fund balance policy. Minimum unassigned fund balance. It is the goal of the village to achieve and maintain the unassigned fund balance in the general fund at fiscal year-end, ranging from 15% to 25% of the subsequent year's budgeted expenditures. This minimum fund balance is to protect against cash flow shortfalls related to timing or projected revenue receipts, and to maintain a budget stabilization commitment. Replenishing deficiencies. When the fund balance falls below the minimum 15% range, the village will replenish the shortages deficiencies by reducing recurring expenditures or increasing revenues pursuant to funding sources, or some combination of the two.
Sorry.
The, should the unassigned fund balance of the general fund exceed the maximum 25% range, the village will consider that such fund balance as a surplus for one-time expenditures that are non-recurring in nature, and which will not require additional future expenses outlays for maintenance, additional staffing, or other recurring expenditures. So, okay, yes, so this is, so this, the 2526 budget is $3,432,240. 15% of that is $514,836. 25% of that is $858,600. So if you scroll that just a little bit, boy, it goes in two pages, but that's okay. All right, so to do the analysis, we take our fund balance, and this is just.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm trying to minimize the, the bar.
That's good, that's good. So we take our fund balance and our unassigned fund balance, and then we, the board has discussed a few of these items. They've discussed allocating transfers to capital, and they've discussed street paving and debt reduction. Again, this is not, this is just like an example to show you. All right. To show you, like, the transfer to capitals in the fire, suddenly that would leave a balance of 283. Complete Streets, that would leave that police, 10,000 would leave a balance of 90,000. So this total is this 100,000. This 236 is our portion of street paving that the village has already committed to. And then we discussed that debt reduction, taking some of the high-interest loans and paying them off. So again, these are just kind of examples. They're not, they're, certainly the board has to make decisions on these. So if we kind of go down to the water and sewer fund, you can see that the water fund. So, if we kind of go down to the water and sewer fund, you can see that the water fund, the unassigned fund balance minus a transfer to capital brings us down to seventy-five thousand. Sewer, still pretty healthy fund balance. So, if we go to the next page, let me up, please. So, so that's our annual fund balance analysis. So, we take that, we take our unassigned fund balance history of the last three years, and trending fund balance allows the board to spot problem areas. The chart, this chart identifies the water fund balance trending downward. We know that there are a large improvement project underway, and that has also impacted the annual operating budget with unforeseen expenses. The board has acted by anticipating the new project by raising water rates. Prior to next year, we should revisit the proposed revenue and expenses and plan accordingly. It will also be important to watch this year's financial activity in the water fund. So, if you slow it just a little bit... Conversely, the general fund balance has a surplus in terms of our fund balance policy thresholds, and the board will be discussing their options with that.
So, our fund balance in the general fund is one point four million at the end of last year, one point four five?
Correct.
Okay.
So, that doesn't take into account what we voted on to do with paving?
No.
This graph, doesn't?
Yeah.
Correct, it does not.
Yeah.
That was May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Okay.
That is, that is possible.
These were, May thirty-first, May thirty-first, and May thirty-first.
Okay.
And, again, it's ever-changing as we pay bills and receive revenue.
Right.
Okay, so, twenty-four, twenty-five years' challenge was uncertainty, growth, impact, and change. Twenty-five, twenty-six years' charge will be to protect our village's assets, infrastructure, and cybersecurity. New York State has initiated new legislation requiring mandatory cybersecurity reporting and training for municipalities. Cybersecurity incidents and ransom payments must be reported through a centralized mechanism for all state and local government employees who use computers in their daily work, and also to complete annual cybersecurity training. Although the State Office of Technology Services will make training available for use by municipal corporations, local governments can opt to use an alternate training program. So, all that said, moving forward, we must also monitor how AI will affect financial management and best practices, so that we can forecast with confidence even during uncertainty.
Thank you, Karen.
Does anybody have any questions?
Thorough as always. Is there any, I guess one question. You were talking about long-term debt?
Mm-hmm.
And we will be rolling over the water and wastewater projects to long-term debt, right?
Correct, when they're finished, yes.
So, is there a way, I love that graph where you show things kind of phasing out, right? Is there a way to project what the long-term debt from the wastewater and, and water treatment plant projects would look like on that graph in advance?
Um, yeah, we could, we could kind of do a forecasting. Ty and Bond had done a few years ago, a water study, and I think that on the water side of it, they took into account some of these upcoming projects, but we're here now, the projects are going on. And, again, it's, it's a lot for a small village to have a hundred thousand dollars in principal and sixty thousand in interest for, you know, for two more projects of this, of this size that will be going out probably thirty, twenty or thirty years. But, yes, we, we, that should be part of what we sit down and talk about. And then, you can see also that, you know, it all looks far away until it gets close. Like, you know, you don't think thirty-two, and twenty-thirty-two, you know, a lot of these are, are going to be paid off.
But we're going to be bringing the new fire truck online...
Correct.
And both of these water and sewer projects into long-term debt before any of these drop off.
Correct. So, the water and sewer, again, you have to always look at the whole picture, but the water, we already did start budgeting for the principal and interest.
Yeah, 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 I know, but just in terms of, just the sheer amount of long-term debt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like I said, it's part of the picture, you know, you can go every year and every year, but when you're doing the forecasting, you really depend on look at the...
We probably should look at it as, we probably should look at it as our total long-term debt, and then, as it gets assigned to water, general, and sewer. Even though our, our credit rating is based upon our table, our financial solvency is also based upon which fund everything's coming from.
Yeah, general fund versus water.
Yeah, because that's not all general fund.
No.
Right, I mean, I...
That's all funds.
Right, I'm saying, so, right, so it's worth breaking out, seeing if it's...
Well, the only thing that's not general fund is the big blue chunk at the bottom.
Correct, yeah. I mean, I could...
Yeah, which is not without funds, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you very much.
So, Karen, I agree with you. One of the things we've been discussing, and we discussed that last meeting, we kind of prioritize, when should we make the transfer to capital accounts? We said that was one of our highest priorities to do.
She just said now, and she was walking by, and she wasn't...
Well, it's just, it's not going away, and it gives you a clearer picture of where you are when you start moving the money, coming to these...
Because one of the things we usually do at the end of the budget cycle, which is now, is make that transfer to our capital accounts.
Correct.
And you have in your forecast there, transfer for, to the fire of seventy, complete streets, ten, police, ten, and parks, ten.
Correct.
As, as a forecast number to transfer to the capital accounts. I think it'd be prudent of us to act on that and clear that quickly, so we can move them in. I'd like to make a motion to transfer the fire seventy thousand, streets ten, police ten, and parks ten from our fund balance.
And the water and the sewer?
For water, yeah, well, and water and sewer apart, yes.
Correct.
And the water and sewer transfers as well, fifty thousand in water, fifty thousand in sewer.
Second.
Discussion.
Thanks to me.
It's nice to be able to talk some...
Yeah.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Go Karen. Thank you, Karen.
When do we next owe a payment on the vehicle leases? Oh, they're kind of all spent out. Okay, all right. Just a, someone, John, okay, all right, October, November.
Next on the agenda is, we're going into current projects, request bids for District Tru, District Street, Tropey. So, what this means is, we'd like to go out to bid. I thought, just didn't make it up under current projects. Excuse me. There. One second. So, the Village of Rhinebeck requests bids for the pruning of street trees within the business district from Montgomery Street to the municipal lot. Justification is East Market Street and Route Nine, and we would need to file for this to get a permit to be able to do that. And the justification is, we have a lot of dead branches in those locust trees that are in the business sector that are quite dangerous for us right now. And we discussed this last year, but it was after the leaves had fallen, and it was too difficult to act, to find where the real dead branches were. While we still have leaves, we can be able to go out and do that. So, I'd like to make a motion to go out to bid for the pruning of the street trees in the district, in, in our business district from Montgomery Street to the municipal lot, for a contractor to obtain a New York State permits, we don't need a Philly permit, and have the work completed by the end of September twenty twenty-five before the leaves fall. This pruning will be all, not only removing the dead branches, but removing the branches that are, are flooding to buildings now. You're actually brushing up against buildings.
This is only East Market Street?
Only East Market Street. Estimated cost is between five and six thousand dollars, and I would recommend that that, that come out of the street.
Like, yeah, that's our, our, our tree.
The street, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. I don't have a problem requesting the bid.
I'm second.
Second.
Paul, any discussion?
I was wondering if we could tie in, because there's five thousand dollars budgeted to do some work in the mini park with pruning, could we tie that together?
Oh, that's a good idea. It's a great idea.
If you want.
Yeah, I mean, if it doesn't take five thousand, that's great, but, you know...
Yep. So, we could, since you did budget that in parks, I don't know, we could ask them to just up their bid, so we know what...
Yeah, two separate bids.
Oh, yeah. I would think we have to, so we know how to...
Right. So, how does that go?
So, I mean, just for tree pruning, and then, like, they have one set of, they have one bid for East Market Street, and they have one bid for the ones that...
Where they just itemize them.
Is this the mini park, or...
Yeah, the, the mini park.
Yep.
We'll walk for bid, bring the bids back.
Do you, do you need more details, Mark?
I will, from Eleanor, for the RFP, because I'm going to put it as one RFP, but I just need more specific details for the...
Okay, next on the agenda, mini park drainage update.
We should go.
What?
We should go.
Oh, I'm sorry, I did all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, sorry. Now, how about a mini park update on our project that's going on here?
Hey, everyone, so, for the record, I'm Brandi Nelson, I'm an engineer with Ty and Bond, village engineer, and as Karen pointed out, and if I could just say kudos to Karen, she mentioned in her financial assessment that the combination of grants that created the payments for funding the improvements to the fire department apron and the handicap accessibility, it was, I think, three different funding sources that had to be tracked, and then reimbursement sought, and there were lots of conversations back and forth, but Karen is amazing, and so, it was a very complicated project, even for the county, to approve us on because of the number of grants, but, well done. So, similar grant program, the village was successful in being awarded two hundred thousand dollars from the community development block grant program for drainage improvements at Lyons Mini Park. Ty and Bond, at the request of the village, conducted a preliminary evaluation of the drainage condition out there, and had come up with a conceptual design that formed the basis of the grant application. Now, with that award, what our next steps are, and what we're doing right now, is we're getting quotes for a survey that will allow the detailed design to be finished, and then, we are anticipating putting bidding documents together, so that this would be bid through the winter of this year, and be ready for spring construction. That's the schedule that was outlined in the grant application, and at this point in time, I don't see any reason that there would be any delay there.
Great. Any questions?
When you say a survey, you're talking about literally from land survey, or what are you talking about?
So, the conceptual design was based on the contour data that's available from the state of New York, which is, is very good for planning, but not good for detail construction. So, we're going to have a surveyor go out and actually survey everything up, but this is for topographic and location of things like, like ground equipment and trees and things like that, because we want to try and minimize any impacts to existing facilities.
Is it of the whole Lyons Mini Park, or just the area under discussion, the surveying?
That's a great question. Right now, what I asked the surveyor for was about half an acre area that encompasses the intersection of Arnett and North Park Street, where some of the drainage structures are going to be located to capture the water that's running onto the park, as well as, I would say, Vanessa, probably a, a third of the park area itself. If, if there's a reason we think we need more, there are some efficiencies that can be had by having the surveyor pick up more, but I was focused mostly on the project area.
Because, Rick, I was just thinking about how the Safe Roots to School path comes through the park, and I don't know if we're going to need surveying.
Is it already surveyed?
Is it already surveyed? I'll have to check. I know that they've been working on Nollwood.
Okay. Well, I'd love to follow up with you on that, then, because if it's already surveyed, then we would use that survey, or maybe see if there's just a gap in it, and that would, that could, you know, be a benefit.
Depending on the cost, would it make sense to just survey the whole area if it turns out that we're going to survey several pieces of it?
Well, if it's done under the, under the TAP grant, and it would fall, it's, that's part, yeah, that's part of the TAP grant, it would fall under there.
May I follow up with you tomorrow on that? Great. But am I understanding that if there is not survey available, is there a larger survey scope that we want to get that's a little bit more?
Well, let me find out, I'm going to find out if they're going to do, like, what the timing is.
Okay. Yeah, timing is everything. We're asking a surveyor to perform this work rather quickly, so that we can have the construction documents.
If it was because of cost, right, I don't know what the cost differential is from doing the whole to doing what the project area is, we have a limited set of money here. I don't want to increase the cost of expenditure of the two hundred thousand dollars to do the whole park, if we don't have to.
I can have a conversation with the surveyor on that. I have not given you guys a task order for this yet, because I'm still getting the survey pricing, so this is appropriate conversation to be having right now. Usually, the surveyors, they charge you on a day rate, and so, you know, if our survey scope is small, and they're only there for one day, but they could get more by being there for a full day, you know, eight hours instead of six hours, you might as well get them, I don't know. Yeah, so, I'll, I'll talk...
I'm just being mindful of the...
The budget.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Go.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want us to stay there and talk about?
Sewer, sewer, Asher Dam.
I have some great news about Asher Dam, too, if you wanted to give that...
Do I have great news about Asher Dam? So, um, so, yeah, so, again, another grant-funded project is the completion of the Asher Dam engineering assessment, so that is being funded through a New York State DEC non-point source grant. It's one of the first years that they're offering those grant funds to help municipalities complete these studies on municipally-owned dams, and the study is a, it's a statutorily prescribed assessment of various conditions of the dam, including its structural stability, its ability to pass certain size storms over the dam, and evaluation of the condition of the dam, and evaluation of the hazard classification of the dam, and so it's very comprehensive in nature. So, we have our subcontractors out there right now. Yesterday, in fact, they, we had divers in the, in the pond doing an inspection of the backside of the dam, so the underwater portion of the dam, and identifying the low-level outlet condition and plugging it. And so, we're, we're making the most of this opportunity to plug those outlets, so that we can do, so that the village can conduct a repair on the downstream side of the dam associated with the valves that are used to lower the dam down when there are storm events. So, where we are currently is that we finished both a topographic and bathometric, and bathometric is an underwater survey of the front and back of the dam. We've completed the detailed dam inspection. We're currently in process of conducting the hydraulic and hydrologic modeling of the dam and the watershed that contributes to the dam, and we've done the physical inspection of structural elements of the dam. We need to do some further analysis after the data from the dive inspection comes back to us, and after that, we will move forward with finalizing the hydraulic model, drafting the engineering assessment. drafting the engineering assessment, and probably planning to sit down with you guys and go through some of the preliminary findings because the objective of the engineering assessment is to assess the condition and make recommendations for improvements to keep the dam functioning in its safe and appropriate way to pass the size of the storm.
The key point is here, plugs are in.
Right.
Plugs are in.
So rain, please.
Plugs are in. So valve repair is in process.
I'm at home, I'd like to repack the valves.
Couple weeks.
Wow.
Yeah.
Okay, everybody, please.
Exactly.
So finally. Any questions? Any questions for Brandi?
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Brandi.
Thanks for being a topic of all of this.
Thank you.
Yes, have a good evening.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Martina, are you or Vanessa, you want to talk about the domain and email migration?
Okay. So New York State passed a new law.
Of course it did.
That says that all municipal governments' websites have to end in the .gov. Ours is at .org for our website. Our emails are .gov. So Martina and I have been working on this in discussion with PCA, in discussion with Squarespace that hosts our website. And it's a kind of a two-phase project. Our goal is to consolidate everything under villageofreinbeck.gov, both emails and website. We like villageofreinbeck.gov better than villageofreinbeckny.gov.
And it's available.
It's villageofreinbeck.
We already got it. We got it.
You got it.
All right.
We just haven't switched over or used it. Because we, it's the option, do we want villageofreinbeck? And why do we want villageofreinbeck? Personally, we want villageofreinbeck.
We want villageofreinbeck.
I too.
I personally like NY because if it finds out we're in New York. We had this huge debate before all of you.
Right.
To set that name of Village of Reinbeck NY. And in the previous, and those who were on the board before decided that they wanted that, the identification of New York. So that's the only difference versus Village of Reinbeck, which is great. But I just want to bring that up because it was a very long discussion years back.
Do you want to vote on it?
What?
Do you want to vote on it?
So according to the Google, there are no other Reinbecks in the United of these states.
That was not my point.
I know that was.
My point was, it was that we're in New York.
True statement.
For a normal business, though, it would be much easier to keep it at villageofreinbeck. For people who are searching, for people, I give out my email daily. Everyone forgets the NY.
I'm not arguing. I'm just giving you history.
The practicality.
I'm giving you history, that's all.
So Redhook is redhookvillage.gov? I'm just sharing information here.
But because we were already able to access the .gov for villageofreinbeck, and to keep everything the same, the big decision has been to change our email to match that.
Yeah. And PCA says that is totally doable and.
They would keep it so that any incoming emails to either one would show that.
Right.
Yeah, it's a seamless, it's a seamless process.
So that would be the first step of the process. Then the second step would be to work with Squarespace to have the URLs on the website redirect to villageofreinbeck.gov. Now, third piece of this.
Does Squarespace work with .govs?
Yeah. It's, it's like it can, it's just technical details, but short answer is yes.
At first, we thought it wouldn't, and we were very sad.
Yeah.
We had to build the whole thing.
Right.
But we found out that we can.
Yeah. So that would be step two. Step three is where I cried because we have this climate smartreinbeck.org website. And which has a lot of pages and information on it from over the years. And I, I'm actually proposing that I manually rebuild those pages as part of the villageofreinbeck.gov site, rather than having a standalone website. Because for the long term, does it, doesn't really make sense. And according to this new law, you can't have an official village website if it's not a .gov.
Why can't it work?
So what?
Why wasn't, if you can't stop working?
It's like a separate website. You can't just mush it in somehow and back it.
You have to rebuild it.
Oh, my God, I'm so sorry.
But we kind of knew this a long time ago. We wanted it to be part of the village of Reinbeck.
Yeah.
Domain to begin with. Set up similarly. But now we're being forced to do it. And that's the bottom line.
So the writing's been on the wall for quite some time. And it gives me an opportunity to kind of clean house a little bit and, you know, maybe consolidate some stuff.
How many pages?
I don't think.
I don't think it matters. We got to do it. Law, we got to make the transition. And the only decision I think we have to make is.
NY or not.
NY or not.
So Sargertes is village.sargertes.ny.us. So they're going to have to change. Millbrook is villageofmillbrookny.com.
Yeah. A lot of, a lot of small municipalities are going to be going through the same river and wall, and it's pretty complicated technically. Yeah. So, yeah, do you guys want to vote on?
I see no reason to keep the New York.
I agree.
I'm in Villa of Robert.
The village of Reinbeck?
No.
Dot gov.
No. Overruled.
Not lying in the sand.
Well, if we're finding that the NY is better problem proposed.
It is.
The only thing.
People forget it, like me.
Let's make it where you're from.
The only thing I have to change going forward is how it's listed on our business cards and on the website. And we just got employee emails from most people. It's not going to be an issue for us.
End of the period of redirection.
Exactly.
I just have to remind them to give it up.
Exactly.
Is this now a moment to suggest that we switch our email addresses from like Trustee Slavy to L. Slavy?
Yes.
You want? Well, I don't know.
Why?
Why? No. You're trustee.
I don't know.
Okay.
I like that.
All right. I think it's helpful to have those all.
To people who know who you are.
Okay. All right.
Agreed.
Okay, great. So did we second that? Do we have to go?
I didn't even have a motion.
It's just like you say, consensus of the board.
Consensus.
Consensus of the board.
We're rapping NY and we're moving on.
Right.
That's great.
All right.
It's great.
Thank you for your help.
Hey, Vanessa, that's a lot of work. And Martina.
All right. Eleanor, pollinator project.
Okay, so the Partners for Climate Action, Hudson Valley, PCA abbreviated PCA, has approached the Parks Committee about participating in a pollinator garden project to support at-risk pollinators in the Hudson Valley. They've received a grant, and that will allow them to pay for and establish a pollinator garden and five, up to five of these. And they've chosen Reinbeck as one of these sites. Ultimately, the preferred location actually is not within a park, but the Parks Committee supports it enthusiastically. This location is the green space. So when you enter the municipal lot, you have the doughboy on the left side of the entrance. And then on the right side, there's this little strip of green space. And the Reinbeck Garden Club is already taking care of that green space. And they would be willing to have volunteers continue to work with that. The location was selected because it's in a high-traffic area and because of the Reinbeck Garden Club's members who have been taking care of it. Anyway, our commitment would be to ensure that the management outreach and community education continues after the PCA finishes its commitment. That would be in the fall 2026. But they would also help us with designing the plan on how we would maintain it and how we would continue the educational piece. And so I did submit their letter of commitment, and they would be, love to have us sign that. Make a motion that we connect to the pollinator garden and sign the letter of commitment.
Okay.
So my only question, Eleanor, is I'm still confused on the location. Is it on the right side boundary where cars back into going along the side? Or is it in the doughboy section?
No. It's that part that's direct, that's parallel to the street here to market.
Where the big rock is.
Yeah, and it's heading toward the pink house.
Okay.
It's where the big rock.
It's where the big rock is, where sort of feels like there's pollinators already, but not really.
Well, there are some, and they would, they would peep those.
So it's that little quadrant right where that rock is.
Yeah, that sounds great.
I'm just confused on the location as people were describing it. It didn't make sense to me.
So on the right when you're driving.
I did talk to the owner because it's unclear who owns that. I don't know if we own that whole strip, if it's part of the municipal lot. The owner would be, didn't have a problem with it, so.
It should be all right.
And since it's being maintained anyway by the garden club, it seems like a nice.
And I think we own it.
Yeah.
Given that. Can we get rid of the rock and make a night pollinator garden? Or do you want to keep the rock?
I don't know. Say, keep the rock.
All right.
I mean, the rock helps people from driving into it.
Well, it'll be in front of the rock facing the street, most of it, right?
Well, then the rock helps people from driving into the building.
I think, well, I mean, removing a rock could, that's not a small rock.
Ultimately, we want to get rid of one entrance. We want to get rid of both entrances to go to one entrance.
Right.
We want to save that entrance.
Right.
To go there.
Yes. Long term, the plan is to have that be the single entrance.
Right. Which may then take that speaks out.
Well, in which case we'll deal with it when we do. Be transplanted.
I have a comment about the rock. At Farmer's Market, only in Farmer's Market can I speak. People walk into that entrance as well as cars driving into it. And that rock makes people go into the driving space. That's my only comment about the rock.
Well, we don't actually have a sidewalk in the municipal lot. And this is actually one of the things that the Comprehensive Plan Committee focused on deeply was how unsafe it is to hold a farmer's market in the middle of an active parking lot. That was a comment that the farmer's market didn't appreciate. But, you know, there's lots of reasons about what, there's a lot that goes on in that municipal lot. So we just need to be aware.
I have no problem one way or the other with removing the rock. However, I think we really need to make sure that we own the rock before we. That would be doing another survey and saving money.
I think we can leave the rock. I think this is a great idea.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 I don't think.
I'm going to abstain because my day job is working for PCA.
Oh.
Rick, you're up.
Okay. So I just wanted to give folks a quick update about the, yeah, about the status of the replacement of the bridge. Yeah.
Yes.
All right.
Win.
There we go, okay. So I just wanted to give folks a quick update about the status of the replacement of the Lanzman Kill, the, the bridge over the Lanzman Kill. The state has come forward with a set of, a set of plans. And I just made sure that confirmed, confirmed with them that this is what we're actually going to get at the end of the day, if you can translate from those other objects. So basically, we have a Texas-style barrier which mirrors or sort of picks up the old balustrades from the Astor Bridge. The Astor Bridge was, as the New York Times notice, illuminated by electric lights. So we are once again going to be restoring the electric lights onto the bridge. And concurrent with that, just so folks know, the state is going to be purchasing about 980 square feet of land from us. Basically, the area just to the east of the bridge and basically down in the stream bed. And that's because that's where they're going to be putting, doing work and putting the wings into the bridge. So after kind of a long time of nothing going on, we're starting to see plans, we're starting to see some motion that is want to let folks know that this is actually seemingly moving forward after kind of a long, dark period.
Okay, I'll go ahead.
How high, how high is that curb, you know, that drops off into the street? Like this?
It's a regular curb.
It's a regular curb.
Regular curb.
Six inches, eight inches.
Yeah, regular curb. Yeah. And the.
Just because in the past pedestrians crossing there had that protective feeling.
Can't do it.
Can't do it.
Can't do it. We've been through this. The issue is if you go.
It was two separate bridges. There was the pedestrian bridge and then there was the vehicle.
And if you want to really take a look at it, the issue is this part of the railing.
Wait.
Yeah. Initially, we looked at trying to separate the, doing just what we had, which was, which was lovely. But the answer, but the problem was you couldn't build a car compliant barrier and land the sidewalk to the east of there. You'd be way up the hill by the time you got there. So that was the, and then you need another new bridge is not feasible.
So sort of like new requirements on what keeps a barricade safe is what's.
Right. That, that, well, if you remember what happened to, what happened to our.
Right, yeah, the car jumped over the curb and destroyed the.
Right. And so this, this current design is substandard. Or not this design, the current, the current, the current bridge is substandard. And this brings us up to standard.
There's actually another major issue, and that was Rockefeller Lane. Because you add that other sidewalk in and they make the aprons or whatever they were called. We, there was no way to get, keep Rockefeller Lane, have the sidewalk and have the.
Have the barrier.
The barrier that keeps cars on the bridge.
Right. So.
So we would have been forced to close Rockefeller Lane if we did that.
Right, so that's not awesome. But, but what we have now is we have cars won't jump off the bridge into the kill, but they'll jump.
They'll take out a path.
They did jump the sidewalk and take out a pedestrian.
Right. But that's as.
But that's the.
On any sidewalk.
On any sidewalk.
And, and the answer is that you can't put, basically, you can't put something that isn't car-proof in between the pedestrians and the.
The sidewalk?
The sidewalk.
They did on the Kingston Bridge. Just so you know.
Right, but that, but that's a series of block, right? I mean, that's a long series of block. And they don't have the landing problem that we have, right? They have plenty of room to land people. So that was, it was, this was long, long discussed. So that was, it was, this was long, long discussed. The preference was for, to maintain the separated, you know, that's a lovely function when you get to look over the river. But it was just engineering-wise not feasible.
And we voted to approve this.
Yeah, so I just wanted to let folks know that.
Was the ETA?
Nothing specific, here.
Some question, and it just came to me and it may be too late. Given the length of the bridge, which is now much longer than what the current bridge is. I forget the exactive. Would it be prudent to ask them to put another light on the sidewalk side so it's lighted better?
Light on the sidewalk?
Three lights instead of two.
I mean, how long is it?
It's like 500.
No, 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 that part's like 50 feet, I think.
No, it's much longer than what.
I can, I can, I can ask them, we can look at it.
Just to have the sidewalk lighted?
It's, well, it's 30 of the interior, if you switch here. This is 30 feet.
It's 30 feet between existing.
In the interior there, and so these are slightly, slightly over this. The entire project spans that.
Yes.
I think 30 feet is pretty.
Thirty, 30 feet, I'm expecting that distance to be larger.
Yeah, no, no.
30 feet.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. All right, update. Martina, let's talk about uniforms purchase request.
So a few years back, we switched over to Cintas, which, you know.
Well, I'm gonna be a problem.
Looking back, may not have been the best choice. So Kyle, our superintendent, did go and get a quote from somebody that we actually used to get our uniforms from, Gerard Price from Uniforms USA. And for the three departments, he would issue 11 bottoms, either shorts or pants, 11 shirts, 11 t-shirts, two draftels with reflective striping. And the cost per employee per month would be $12, which is significantly cheaper than what we're currently paying with Cintas, whose previous proposal I included, which is what we're currently under. They did send me an email, Cintas, today. In light of the competitive proposal, they're offering 10% off of our current program plus the removal of the entire A R balance of $6,323, which is a balance that we shouldn't even have.
We don't need it.
So Kyle did try to get another quote from another provider, but there was an issue with delivery, so we couldn't, we couldn't go through that. So Kyle and Chrissy's request would be to go with Uniforms USA because poor Chrissy's been dealing with a billing nightmare with Cintas.
We don't like the number 67.
Yeah.
Hopefully the billing can be better.
It hasn't been consistent with billing, it hasn't been consistent with drop-off.
Why did we move to Cintas in the first place?
Because guys in our highway department weren't happy.
We didn't have like a uniform provider.
Yeah, we did. No, we were doing.
We had Gerard, Uniform USA.
Uniform USA, right. The one we want to go back to. We were with Uniform USA, we went to Cintas, now the proposal to go back to Uniform USA.
Why did we leave Uniform USA?
Because we ran into bad mismanagement at Uniforms USA. We are running into the same problem. Uniforms weren't getting back, uniforms weren't being picked up, uniforms weren't being cleaned, uniforms were missing.
Same was not the same, though, as what it's been with Cintas.
Right.
So why else do we think that this is going to be better?
So is this $12 per month? Just sorry to interrupt, but it doesn't say that it just says.
Cost per employee would be $12 per month as per Kyle. Plus, there's a service charge of $9 and an energy charge of $5, but they're also doing the M A S, the M A S that go down at the highway and whatever.
So wouldn't it be helpful to just get a kind of total cost of what one would be versus the other? This is kind of confusing here. I can't hear because some of the.
Yet that would be easier.
Or at least like a monthly total or something.
So I just have a question because if the board decides to change, is Cintas, are they going to push this, the $6,000 that they say?
I don't know, we haven't paid thus far.
Because we don't really, yes, we don't really know.
So I feel like that's not a conversation for five of us.
Right.
Or at least for four of the five of us.
We also claim that we have a valid service agreement with them till 2026, which I also don't believe that we do, it was supposed to be an annual.
So why don't you take some time to figure all of this out?
We asked them for a copy of this alleged contract.
The last contract is what I posted.
I mean, they're saying, they're saying we have a long term.
Unless they do it in automatic every September, in which case September is next month.
I'm just saying if they, you know, if they're claiming that we have this long-term contract, they should have a copy of it.
The only contract they have is the one that I.
Well, and there's no dates on it. It says this agreement is effective as of this date from blank to blank with a minimum term of 36 months. So we've been with them for 36 months.
Yes.
I'm not gonna worry about a contract that doesn't actually have dates written into it.
Right.
If, I'm a little baffled by the fact that this came from like a Gerardprints@gmail.com with like no.
He's a one-man show. He was our previous provider.
Okay, all right, so, okay, there's like, oh, Uniforms USA, okay. Sure, I mean, if this is what Kyle and you and Chrissy all want to go with, then it makes sense to me. It's cheaper and, but we do need to figure out.
What the exact cost would be.
What the exact cost would be. We also need to figure out what this Cintas A R is, but I'm only about to you guys.
I mean, technically, our next meeting is the day before Cintas is saying that.
What do you want to do in this, you want to just hold on or do you want to move forward?
I'm happy to move forward, but, you know, I think as part of moving forward, we need to make sure that we're not on the hook with Cintas. So I'm happy to state a motion of moving forward with the Uniforms USA agreement with the stipulation that we can sort out the Cintas contract appropriately.
Second that. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Vanessa, items for your comments.
Okay, so I'm asking the board, I'm making motions to approve two purchase requests. One is a sole source. So I'm requesting that the village board approve purchase of a water cannon from Eldersley Stables. This is our compost department. Eldersley Stables is purchasing a water cannon, amount of $7,169.85, specifically custom-built for this project. This is to be able to spray out the compost collection dumpster, but also to spray the compost piles when they need hydration. And then the second item is a request for the village board to approve or to authorize the village clerk to go bid on a government auction site, up to $10,000 for a used container. The storage container will be used at the compost site specifically for the equipment there. And I worked with Karen just to see like, can, how does the village go about placing bids on the auction site? What with purchasing policy? And we determined that this works rather than getting a three required bids as long as it's a government auction site. Okay, so. And then also in that memo, I included just kind of like an update on where we're at with our compost grant.
Yeah.
So this all comes down to grant money?
Yes.
Make sure we have it. So I second your motion.
I just didn't put the.
On our end. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I just have a question, just when it's all said and done, are we going to have clarity on who owns it? Like a document that we own those items?
Yeah.
Yeah, for seven years, it all comes back.
Unless.
So I just want to.
But I mean, if we specifically purchased those two, shouldn't they?
We've purchased everything so far, how about the grant money?
Does need to be a new one because you get used ones pretty, new container, get used ones pretty.
Used, yeah.
She sent out on the auction site.
Or a used container.
Okay, so I'm just looking at the new.
She's just showing, she's just showing.
Yeah, and you can, I mean, I think.
And that's kind of the idea of going to the auction, hopefully they're bargaining.
All right, Karen, you're up. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Karen, you're up.
Okay, pressures report is for the period ending July 31st. General fund ended the month with $119,661.94. Water fund ended the month with $171,325.26. And the sewer fund ended the month with $146,223.8. Vouchers presented for payment to include prepaid's in the general fund, total $156,009.94. That includes $57,469 for the compost grant, $9,091 for the P D grant, $2,0537.50 for the zoning code, $2,0816 for Asher Dam. In the water fund, $68,650.50. In the sewer fund, $57,069.11. And I already did just report the compost. The water treatment plant upgrade project had bills totaling $32,085.95. And then the wastewater treatment plant, $3,120.
Make a motion to approve vouchers.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Okay, monthly operating statement is provided with revenue and expenditures through August 12th. Water and sewer, August monthly bills went out at $33,776.9. Sewer bills went out at $43,898.42. And those are due on August 25th. The semi-annual hydrants and fire line, also bills went out in the totaling $15,900. Those are also due through August 25th. Adjustments were signed off by Mayor Bassett and presented for approval.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Okay, and I just have one budget amendment. And that is for, to increase the 5654 E V charging station and decrease contingency by $2,860.
So moved, but why?
This, this covers our maintenance policy for the charging stations. We did. I don't remember how much was in the budget, but obviously not enough.
We budgeted, I think, it was $1,860. And the bill came in at $5,600.
And the problem is if we don't have the maintenance, we can't do bill, we can't charge.
So we doubled the price of maintenance on us?
According to them, we didn't pay last year. And that's doubled, and that's why it's doubled.
Okay, so it's actually just.
Did we actually pay last year? Can we do some research on that?
I asked Chrissy to look into that.
Yeah, I don't want to approve this until we figured out whether or not we were like, that we were actually, like, are we being double billed?
Yeah, and I had not heard back from Chrissy on that request.
I have a table.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Karen.
And then everyone's all set, I'll take it then.
Thanks, Karen.
Michael, finally, you're up. Michael's gonna talk to us about the Harriet Tubman byway resolution.
Oh, is this what I read about in the paper that Red Heart did?
Red Heart, yes, Cruz, yes. And so so far, in the 22 counties that are expected to be in a byway between New York City and up to Albany West to Buffalo, 122 municipalities have so far approved the resolution you're looking at. In Deuce County, we are the only one on Route 9 that has yet to approve it. That's mainly because I haven't brought it to you yet. So the reason for even considering this kind of resolution to establish this kind of byway is primarily educational, to inform the public about an aspect of our history that may not be the prettiest part of our history, but is important for us to be reminded about. Harriet Tubman, born in 1822 in Maryland, was born a slave. Parents were slaves. Your mother was a slave, you become a slave. As a young woman, she decided that she'd had enough of this. She had been hurt physically. Somebody was upset at somebody next to her who had not done something the way the slaveholder wanted. Threw a heavy weight at that person, didn't hit that person, hit her skull for the rest of her life. She was suffering as a result of that. And despite that, she continued to have the same expectations of everyone else who belonged to this particular slaveholding family. She wound up escaping from Maryland and went to Philadelphia by, I think it was in the 1840s. And eventually to New York State, lived in Auburn, New York. It's where she died eventually. But after being in Philadelphia, she realized that, yeah, there is another life available to me and I should share this with my brothers, sisters. Eventually, she was responsible for helping 70 people altogether escape slavery from their slaveholders in the state of Maryland. And initially, it wasn't necessary to go all the way to Canada. You know, that in 18, I mean, in 1827, New York State passed a law that said there shall be no more slavery in this state. By the way, in this state, Rhinebeck, the population of Rhinebeck that was enslaved in the census of 1790, it was 15% of the population of Rhinebeck. And that was greater than any state in the South at the time. But coming back to Harriet Tubman, she helps these, so 1827, state of New York outlawed slavery. But by 1850, it wasn't safe to be in New York State because there was something called the fugitive slave law that got passed by Congress in 1850 that said that, you know, if you were a slave anywhere in the United States, Maryland, let's say, and you were in another state like New York, you had the right as the slaveholder to petition the community where that slave had escaped to, to return that individual to the slaveholder. And that's one of the major reasons that the Underground Railroad in New York State and actually the entire Underground Railroad between Maryland and Niagara Falls was designed to bring people out of the country to Canada. And interestingly, after the Civil War, some of those folks wound up coming back to the United States. Some of her family who she had arranged to go to Canada, Ontario, wound up coming back and living with her in Auburn. She doesn't die, she lives until early in the 20th century. But this resolution would allow us to be part of this byway, this corridor, this Underground Railroad corridor that is sponsored in effect by the state of New York. It's, New York State actually is using funds and authority that comes from federal government, the federal highway administration through the New York State Department of Transportation to be able to authorize this byway to exist all the way from New York City all the way up to Niagara Falls. There is a provision you need to be aware of, and it's one of them that's highlighted in yellow, that in some communities would put in, it's, what I'm referring to is the one that talks about signage not being permitted off-site signage. We're talking about billboards here. There is a billboard in Rhinebeck. As you enter on Route 9 on your right-hand side, that every once in a while, a new sign goes inside that billboard that's currently advertising rugies. That would be grandfathered. Existing billboards are okay and.
So we wouldn't be allowed to have any new ones anywhere?
You would not be allowed to have any one, any billboards along the byway nor within 600 feet of the farthest edge of the, of the nearest edge of the byway to the billboard. And that billboard would also have to be visible from the byway, in this case Route 9.
So the byway itself is Route 9?
The byway is expected to be Route Nine. It has not yet been established, but according to, um, my conversation with Peter Bunton, who's the, my contact here in Dutchess County, he's the head of the Mid Hudson Anti-Slavery Project. He, he expects that that's where it will be because there are, even though we have no documented sites in our village that have a history of being part of the Underground Railroad, there are others in Dutchess County, in Poughkeepsie, for example, in Fishville. And even though there are sites in the eastern part of the county that are Quaker meeting sites, where there is documentation, uh, it's, uh, it's highly likely according to Peter that it will be Route Nine. If it were not Route Nine, let's say it was, um, Route three oh eight, for example, the same provision would apply. It's a, uh, it's Public Law eighty-nine two eighty-five. It's a federal, federal law that governs how states must implement, uh, byways. And it's there that the citation, where the description that I just referred to, uh, comes from. But at, at this point, the planning board's, uh, existing signage regulations, the, the only way somebody could get a billboard would be to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that is so far beyond.
That's what I was gonna say, it's like, we probably already don't allow it.
Yeah, we, we don't already allow it, but it's just sort of, you know, it's always good to know when we're backing ourselves as a reporter.
So would we have other responsibilities? With this designation, I mean.
That's the major responsibility is to, is to make sure that no signage that intrudes grossly on any aspects of the byway, uh, you know, to make sure that those don't get permitted. Otherwise, it's, there are no responsibilities other than.
To be a good partner.
Being enthusiastic about, uh, the fact that we are joining other communities in, uh, educating the public about, uh, an aspect of our American history.
This aspect is what held the county up from trying to move forward, which it just now recently had.
Oh, the billboard aspect?
The whole byway steering process.
I think it's great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the Harriet Tubman byway resol- resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? Sir Michael lies here.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you for the history.
Thank you.
Sorry to keep you so long. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I don't know if I'm permitted to interject at this point, but today at Printers, we picked up the printed version of a walking tour of the village that's funded primarily by, uh, a grant from the county. And I have, uh, some copies to give to you guys.
Woo, thank you.
Thank you.
It's awesome.
Okay, next on the list, this is going way back in time. Been so long I don't remember the dates, but there was a, uh, agreement made by the town of Red Hook circulated to all the five communities that serve on, on the Panda Board. At, at that, at that time when we had the resolution, we objected to the resolution only because of the dates associated with that resolution, and we agreed to move forward to get an amendment to the resolution to change it so the dates line up with our process for village funding. This rider is, is a rider agreement to be given to Panda that states that in terms of second rider into the part of this agreement, blah, 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 and then blah, blah, blah. We would basically receive from them on April, a proposal to work into our fall plan, and we would pay them by July fifteenth, to get it to the one I get, after our fiscal year and in our budget process. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the rider agreement for Panda. By the way, this has been approved by Panda, they looked over and agreed to it, and. Get it off to them. It's been given to the town, to the village of Red Hook and the village of, uh, Tidley already.
I'll second that motion, but Eleanor raised a good point. We have to have our public hearing done by April fifteenth, but the budget doesn't actually need to be done until May first. So shouldn't the date be May first and not April fifteenth? I mean, they're basically asking us to finalize our budget two weeks before we have.
No, they're just talking about. No, they're asking us to, to approve that portion of the budget.
Right, so we would have to finalize the budget. Yeah, so I think we need to push back on that date and just say, you got your dates wrong.
Okay.
All right, so, so be, be prepared for another six months delay.
I mean, we, we can approve it and just like strike April fifteenth and write May first.
Do that?
I'm happy to do that.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I amend the motion to strike the April fifteenth date and make it May first.
Second.
You're up. All right, um, I, uh, on behalf of Gary, I would like to read the list of people to nominate to the Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee. We have some, uh, the, to remind all of us, the CPIC shall consist of seven to nine members appointed by the mayor with the approval of Board of Trustees. Members shall include one trustee of the village board, who shall serve as chair or co-chair, one member of the planning board, one member of the zoning board of appeals, one representative from the village's climate smart task force, and up to five additional at-large members representing business, community organizations, or residents with expertise in planning, architecture, economic development, sustainability, or historic preservation. This is the suggested nomination list, or this is the nomination list. Oh, it's two-year terms, and we will, um, stagger the first set of appointments so that some of them have a two-year term and some of them have a one-year term. I would like to make all of the terms, um, complete at the same time that the planning board and the ZBA completes, which is April first, so that all this kind of planning stuff can happen all at once. So I'm gonna suggest that the people with the quote-unquote one-year term are only in the, are only on the hook for eight months. So their term will expire on April first, twenty twenty-six, and the folks with the two-year term, their, their term will expire on April first, twenty twenty-seven. So, suggested membership, um, myself, Lydia Slavy as a co-chair, John Clark, um, who's a member of the planning board as a co-chair as well. He has agreed to this over his better judgment. Jason Greenwald, who's a member of the ZBA, Mimi Jo Cornella, who's a member of the Climate Smart Task Force, Donna Warner, Elijah Bender, Ernesto Martinek, Lisa Fountain, and Karen Unger. Gary and I interviewed about fifteen people, and this was the group that we came up with. I'm gonna suggest for the one-year term so that John and I are serving staggered terms, not by any stretch of the imagination, a comment about his extraordinary value to the committee, that John, Donna, Elijah, Ernesto, and Karen all serve one-year terms at first, and that myself, given my election cycle, Jason, Mimi, and Lisa, nope, sorry, I'm switching that. One-year term, John, Ernesto, Karen, Lisa, and Mimi, and two-year term, Donna, Elijah, Jason, and myself. I can get that, it's all in, I'll just say. So that is the motion I am putting in front of us.
Second.
Oh, sorry, you already said this, but people can be re-upped.
Yeah, it's, there's no term limits. The idea behind a two-year term is.
They don't want this to go on forever?
Well, I mean, ideally, actually, in some respects, this might end up being a standing committee, depending on, you know, updates that might need to happen over the course of the next ten to twenty years. Yeah, I have no idea, so we'll find out. But there's no expiration date on this committee at the moment. It's going to take, put it this way, it's gonna take more than two years to implement the comp plan. It's gonna take more than two years to implement any number of things in the comp plan.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Lydia. Hey, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for seven eight twenty-five.
Second.
Discussion.
I just want to make sure, Martina, does that include the comment I sent you about the reason I abstained on it?
So that's not something that I put into the minutes. They don't really include the reasons for why, but also those words weren't actually physically spoken during the meeting. So no, I would, did not make that change.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Obed.
Abstain.
Treat Commission.
I know, report.
And that's the Climate Smart Task Force.
Okay, I would like to encourage anyone who's around to go to the farmers market on August twenty-fourth. The Climate Smart Task Force will be tabling there. We did submit for silver certification in July.
Woo!
At, fingers crossed, we'll find out if we made the cut in September, most li- likely. I did hear from my contact at the DEC Office of Climate Change that they got the most certification requests ever. So go New York State. The, yeah, the heat pump projects at the police and wastewater treatment plant are finished. We're just waiting on those reimbursement checks. I checked with the parties today, and the, the check should be coming soon. We did receive our second round of reimbursements for the DEC compost grant. And thank you to trustee Hook Co. and a couple volunteers for helping me out with the trees for the kids' planting that we tended to when I'm out of the garage. So my, my big news this evening is, if you recall, we did put our name forward to our Hudson Valley Regional Council contact, who's like our clean energy communities coordinator for all things NYSRTA. They put us forward for a grant to, uh, to work on this building. And this is that six hundred thousand dollar match-free grant, where we're required to do a passive out study first, and then had a implementation would flow from that study. It's moving forward.
Amazing!
So, um, we'll share more as we know more, but if the next step is Gary and I will have a kickoff call with them.
Great, amazing.
Alda Martin.
Right, I'm gonna shorten this because we still have a long way to go. So I'm gonna skip that part. There was, uh, was a discussion that the Frost Foundation might pledge twenty-five hundred to place a memorial in the Thompson Mazzarella Park, honor somebody, but then there was a discussion about needing a policy that covers memorials, so I thought that was interesting. The third basketball backboard has been installed. The bid was awarded for the Little League Park fence. It will include netting, I think I reported that before, along the follow lines to protect people on the pickleball court and our cars. Uh, the plan is to build a new fence in July, then seed the plant, and a sprinkler system will be installed to cover at least part of the field and help down on our maintenance. Okay, the bid for the bocce courts was awarded to Dave Matthews, and the courts have been built. I've heard nothing but glowing reviews, people are really enthusiastic, so, so that was great. There was a skate jam held recently, Chad was effusive about how well it went. Uh, I was a little concerned because he acknowledged the music was very loud, not all participants were productive, protective here, but that's not our problem because we're not in charge of that park. And then just one more thing, I am going to be meeting with Andrew Miller on Wednesday for an estimate on how much it would take to remove the tree of heaven problem that we have in the Lions Mini Park and the Legion Park.
Is it? Okay, we're gonna go into special requests. I'd like to make a motion for both myself, our privilege clerk Martina, and trigger Karen, who will often attend the ICOM conference and make classes in September. Is that again? Any discussion?
I have a question because, at least as they were posted, there's no amount stated. There's just an amount for the conference itself, but there's no amount stated for anything else. Don't we normally estimate what the travel and the hotel would be?
Um, I can gauge those amounts, they're different, there's different hotels.
No, I get that, but I, I, I thought when I went last year, I had to pretty well break everything down.
Yeah, I mean, this is just the request to go to the conference, this is not the travel request or the staying request, so I think we'll need to, oh, when is it?
September sixteen, nineteen?
We will have a meeting ahead of that, but we need to have an estimate on, okay. Right here it says estimated additional cost per hotel, you know, some mileage, but.
So the motion is to attend, but we'll come back to this, right? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion for our court clerk Tricia to attend her conference. Second. Any discussion?
Did that give a total price or?
Ain't here.
Yes.
Um, it's estimated additional costs, just mileage, which is, which shall have to calculate each time.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next, Paul Colledge Marathon. I'd like to make a motion to accept the Paul Colledge Half Marathon. Second. Discussion.
Did we do the Public Works Conference? The Public's Works Conference?
Down below.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sidewalk sale. Member Chamber of Commerce would like to conduct a sidewalk sale. I'd like to make a motion to accept the, my material hours sidewalk sale.
Second.
Uh, nope. The description of the event, retailers to display their wares on racks and tables in the village, all tables and racks to be placed four feet from the front of the stores.
Yeah, we already.
Yeah, it's probably, it's within four feet of the front of the stores, so.
They know that.
Just a typo in there? I, it's just a typo, but I think we need to make it clear that that's.
Agreed.
Within four.
Within, within four feet of the front of the stores. They have, but there's a new executive record.
Anything just a misunderstanding, because that was communicated.
Yeah, no, that's fine, but I'd like to amend the motion to make sure it's clear that it's to be placed within four feet from the front of the stores.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next.
Cinderclaws.
Cinderclaws. So Cinderclaws has come back. Cinderclaws has formally agreed to accept, uh, our request for a donation of ten thousand dollars to the village department. And would like to have, move forward with the Cinderclaws event approval application.
Fantastic.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Cinderclaws application, event application again. Second. Discussion.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I just want to make sure that we're not, that we're not paying anything. I know they're paying ten thousand, but what if it comes out and more than that?
We asked for ten.
We were pretty clear that ten would cover all of our costs, but let's keep track of it.
So I definitely, we didn't budget for it.
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the fair, um, private parking for the Dutchess County Fair next week. Second. Any discussion? The map and all paperwork is there. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have a question about the map.
Okay.
It's your map.
Well, no, actually, it was approved, I've submitted the same map three times. Well, no, actually, it was approved, I've submitted the same map three times, two years it was fine, this year they said it wasn't fine. Now, who controls, Martina, who controls-
I wasn't here, that was not me.
Nestle spoke to somebody, Nestle in my office, a contact.
So the map that we got had you exiting onto Route 9.
Yes, yes, but is that the town, is that the village of Ryanbeck, or is that the state?
That was the state DOT came back and said that that was-
Who in the state? I've talked to the state, they know nothing about this.
They sat in a meeting when we were at it with the Dutchess County Fair, and they said they would not approve it.
This year, this year?
And you did not have-
Wait, this year with the Dutchess County Fair?
And you did not have a permit request in for them to exit from that parking lot. They needed to have a permit request for you to exit.
That's not what they're telling me. When was this meeting?
I'd go back a little bit to my calendar.
Was it this year, last year?
This year.
Two years ago?
This year.
It's last week.
I forget what day it was, yeah. And-
Why wasn't I notified about this? Is this you and Andy up your sleeve?
No, there must be 30 people in this room.
In here?
No, at the fairgrounds, in their conference room, kickoff meeting for a Dutchess County Fair. Dutchess, DOT was there, I don't remember the names-
Well, I talked to DOT, they know nothing. People I talked to knew nothing about it.
Bill Rose is the permit application, so Bill Rose-
Bill Rose doesn't know nothing about it. I spoke to Bill Rose. I spoke to Bill Rose.
They denied the request to be able to exit on Route 9 because you didn't have a request to permit, request a permit to do it.
That's not what Bill Rose is telling me.
Definitely not.
We can only do what DOT tells us.
Yeah, I'm just telling you what Bill Rose told me.
I'll follow with Bill Rose as well, but DOT representatives are at the meeting.
Don't you think I should have been there, a representative?
I don't, I don't call that meeting, Huck. It's not my meeting.
This is the Dutchess County Fair, this is, this isn't-
It's not my meeting.
I understand that.
We're here to approve your application.
I understand that.
Your app-
I have submitted the same application three years, and this year is the first time they came back and said, no, you can't do this.
Not for exiting out onto Route 9.
Yes, no, I, same map, I submitted every three straight years.
Regardless, Huck, we're here to vote on the map you submitted, the map that you gave us, which has no exit onto Route 9, right, and voted by the village board to approve your event parking. Parking has been approved, right, given the design that you gave us.
I had to do that design, you told me to, but I called up the thing and they said, no, this is not the way, this is, Bill Rose told me this stuff.
And you should have connected them to us because I'm not a vermin. Loop me in.
What?
Loop me in if that comes up. I'm more than happy to have the discussion. More than that.
Yeah, okay, I believe that.
Okay. Right now, you, all in favor?
Aye.
You voted to approve.
Yep.
Okay? If you want to have the discussion with DOT, set it up, we'll gladly have it. Next. Moving on. Back-to-school barbecue. I'd like to make a motion to approve the back-to-school barbecue.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Superintendent Conference.
Must be Kyle and me?
Public Works Conference.
Public Works Conference.
Martina, I don't see the back-to-school barbecue.
Yeah, it's not there either.
Oh, very.
Any issue? Anybody have a problem with the back-to-school?
No, it's not a much easier.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the superintendent conference attendance at the NITE Con Public Court for Trinity School.
Second.
Second, he's requesting use the ability to get a building.
Second, so that's the discussion. What do you want to do? We said no before.
We said no before.
Right, when the fire department wanted to go.
Did we, did we then-
Yes?
Yes.
Oh, we did?
Yes.
Did we subsequently, I thought subsequently we thought we came up with guidelines or something?
There were guidelines around taking a, being able to-
That makes it bad support.
Oh.
Okay, that's a good guideline.
That's why it got updated on the form because the wrong form was used, that's why I didn't move on.
Yeah, no worries. So how does that work? Does he just give reimbursement for the actual gas?
Well, yes, he would do, he'd give reimbursement for the gas unless he filled up with $4,000 beforehand and filled it and came back. But if he spent any of his own money, he'd have to submit that receipt for reimbursement.
Okay.
But he didn't give mileage.
Right. Because he's using a bill.
Right.
Okay. That makes sense.
My son did that.
What?
And you see, they're requesting village, my son didn't-
Well, questions, we don't, we use access to the vehicle.
He's the only one that uses them.
Well, that's not the agreement we have, it needs to be made if they don't.
Wow.
Yeah.
And so you're saying we already did this, we approved-
The last conference they went to, yes.
For the fire department because they all just-
And Kyle and Brian.
They all piled into the, into the chief's car and they all went, otherwise they were threatening to all take the cars.
I just don't remember.
Well, no, but the last conference that pile and Brian both went to, they took a little bit.
They did?
Yes.
So we're, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
But I think that if that's going to be an issue, and we have concerns, that maybe somewhere along the way, we should just discuss it.
Yeah.
This will become a policy.
Yeah, one, this is a policy.
Vehicle use policy.
Vehicle use policy.
One, this is a vehicle use policy.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to cancel the second board meeting in August due to the Dutchess County Fair.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to acknowledge the employee resignation of Ben Seeds from our Highway Department effective today.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to open the highway labor position and post for a new highway labor. Ben, this is not, there's public comment time.
Right.
Oh, so I missed that?
This is not a hearing, we made a vote.
I just thought I had some questions regarding it, but, okay, yeah, no, that's-
Board of Engrants, I suggest not.
I mean, we're not the personnel managers, so I think if you have questions, Ben, you should come back tomorrow and talk to Gary.
I was just gonna maybe, like, actually, maybe ask the whole board, like, do you mind if I, like, say what I have to-
Ben, this is not the time or place for that.
Yeah, this is the right place. Oh, like, I was just gonna ask about, like, the Fourth Amendment or-
Ben, this is not the time or place for that.
Okay.
A resignation was submitted today, we accepted it, we accepted the resignation, we voted and accepted that.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, moving on, I'd like to make a motion, as I said, to open the highway labor position with a starting salary of $25 an hour, and post it for three weeks. I'll make up a date.
Second.
If you want to do it till, yeah, August 29th?
That's, I was thinking the end of the month, yeah.
Yes, and that way you can have a week to do it.
Word of the next one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, the best targeting meeting that I always love, I'd like to thank our water operator, Matt Green, for being here three years, dedicating his weekends throughout this whole time to be able to, you know, serve at our water tournament. Thank you, Matt. I'd like to off, make a motion to acknowledge Officer Dan Killian for nine years, right, on our village of Ryanbeck Police Department. Thank you all, thank you for the service you provide. Well done. Time is 8:51, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.